Thank you for your patience. Thank you for coming out tonight. We've just got a few more people coming in the door, but I think in the interest of our devoted viewers on CCTV, we'll start. I'm Sally Schnitzer, 1155 Lowell Road, and I'm co-chair of the Esterbrook Woods Access Study Committee. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us this evening. You are all important partners in the stewardship of Esterbrook Woods. I would especially like to represent some representatives here tonight from Carlisle, Harvard University, the trustees of reservations, generous landowners, and others. Tonight's public hearing is being recorded by CCTV. It's being broadcast live this evening and may be rebroadcast in the future on the public access channel. The purpose of our hearing tonight is to present to you our preliminary recommendations and then to welcome your feedback. Our major job tonight is to listen to you. There's a handout on the back table with all of our preliminary recommendations as well as the email address where you can send comments to us if you have thoughts you would like to give us after this evening. After tonight's hearing, our committee is going to determine -- will meet again to determine if there should be changes in our recommendations before taking a final vote and submitting them in early December to the Board of Selectmen. The select board is responsible for final decisions and actions that might be taken. First, before we listen to you, we'd like to just give you a little overview of who we are, where we've been, and how we've come to our recommendations. As most of you know, the Esterbrook Woods is a large area of forest in the towns of Concord and Carlisle, made up of a mosaic of different ownerships, protected and stewarded over many decades through the collaboration of private and institutional landowners, conservationists, public entity, and citizens. For decades, the woods have been enjoyed by recreational visitors, studied by researchers, and appreciated as a rare, largely undisturbed natural area, a beloved respite from the concerns and pace of modern life. Over the past few years, landowners, especially on Esterbrook Road, have observed a significant increase in visitors accessing the woods at that entry point. Starting in 2014 through the spring of 2016, an increased number of complaints were filed with the town over parking problems, conflicts between homeowners and visitors to the woods, conflicts involving dogs, and other related issues. There were times when parking on the road led to unsafe conditions. In response, the Concord Select Board created our committee and also put temporary parking limitations on most of Esterbrook Road. These limitations remain in effect until 60 days after our committee gives its report to the select board. The purpose of our committee is to, quote, "consider how to address the increased pressure for adequate and safe parking at trailheads, to review other impacts from increased visitor use, and to make recommendations to the select board for immediate and longer-term natural area recreation management plans." Some important things to know about our committee. We were established to be temporary, short-lived. With our first meeting in late April and a report due in December, we have worked hard over the last six or seven months to understand the woods and the issues at hand and to work toward consensus. After our report is given, we'll be disbanded. We're a study committee, and we don't ourselves have the authority to take action. Finally, we were purposely appointed to represent very different points of view. We've learned a lot from one another, but even now, we see this situation from different lenses, as perhaps some of you do as well. There are nine Concord residents on our committee, including abutters to access points in the woods, representatives in the Natural Resources Commission, the Conservation Restriction Committee, the Concord Land Trust, the Town Trails Committee, and several at-large members who have demonstrated an interest in the woods. We are also very grateful for the thoughtful and knowledgeable participation of Nick Darbelauf of Carlisle, appointed to work with our committee by Carlisle's Board of Selectmen. Our members are, in alphabetical order, but you can see their names there: Jeff Adams, Kathy Angel, Nick Darbelauf, Justin King, Lisa Poehl, Bonnie Polig, Neil Rasmussen, Polly Reeve, Peter Seibert, and myself. The committee began with a process of gathering and reviewing information about the woods and the current owners -- excuse me, the current concerns of abutters and visitors. We studied the history of land protection and land ownership, identified and described access points in both towns. We inventoried current parking spaces around the woods with the help of the Concord Public Works and the Natural Resources Divisions. Members also visited other conservation lands in Concord and in other communities to assess other practices in parking rules and regulations and usage. We used a number of approaches to spread the word about our committee and solicit comments, including a public hearing at the townhouse in June, a guest commentary in the Concord Journal, and the Carlisle mosquito, notices at each of the main entry points to the woods, and through our committee's webpage, which invited public input. We reviewed many numerous emails, collected both before our committee was created and afterwards. Approximately 60 people came to our hearing in June, and nearly half took the opportunity that evening to express their thoughts. Early on, we articulated our hope that solutions could be found that balanced three mutually important goals. First, to support the preservation of the ecological health of the woods and Harvard University's stewardship of their land for ecological research and education; second, to respect and support the rights of private landowners and recognize their generosity; three, to continue to welcome visitors to the woods in a manner consistent with its ownership and preservation purposes. Balancing these three objectives, stewardship, the interest of the landowners, and a welcome to the public, is not simple, but our committee believes that it's possible. There are many definitions of what constitutes the Esterbrook Woods, but for our purposes, we're focused on land in the northern part of Concord, between Lowell Road on the west, Barnes Hill Road on the south, and Monument Street on the east, and extending north to the town border with Carlisle and beyond. The partnership with Carlisle is important. Our two towns and several land trusts have worked together to protect the woods and deal with management issues. Our committee understands that the woods functions as a system and that issues or decisions in one part of the woods have an impact elsewhere, even across town borders. Esterbrook Woods has over 1,400 acres of contiguous protected land and more in neighboring Carlisle. Many people who visit the woods don't realize that most of the land is privately owned and protected from development as a result of a 60-year collaboration to support Harvard's Biological Reserve. Understanding this unique land-protection mosaic is very important to our understanding of the woods. This first slide shows the town-owned conservation land in the woods. On the Concord side of the town line, the largest parcel is the 100-acre Poncatostic conservation land, most of which was acquired by the town in 1971, 92 acres, and eight acres of which was acquired in 1990 along Sawmill Brook. This 100 acres is managed by the town's Department of Natural Resources. The other town-owned conservation land is a 13-acre parcel north, around the Monument Farm subdivision near the Concord-Carlisle town line, which provides a buffer to land owned by Harvard and neighborhood access to the Esterbrook Woods. Together, these two town-owned parcels are well less than 10% of the Concord portion of the woods. The largest landowner in Esterbrook Woods is Harvard University's Museum of Comparative Zoology, M.CZ, and its Department of Organismic and Evolutionary Biology, which owns a 672-acre woodland preserve. The preserve, administered as part of the research facility in Bedford known as the Concord Field Station, was established in the 1960s as a result of a vision of two Harvard professors who worked with landowners in Concord and Carlisle to acquire contiguous land to be used by faculty and graduate and undergraduate students for teaching and research in the environmental sciences, zoology, ecology, and animal behavior. Their efforts were aided by generous Concord residents, property owners, the Nature Conservancy, and a grant from the Ford Foundation. It was in support of Harvard's woodland preserve that the towns of Concord and Carlisle, the land trusts of those towns, private owners, the trustees of reservations, and many thoughtful visitors have worked together to protect and steward additional land around the Harvard parcels. Over many years, parcel by parcel, land was protected through gift, purchase, and legal instruments, mostly conservation restrictions, or CRs, that preserved the land for conservation purposes. This next slide adds in the land that's owned by land trusts. The Concord Land Conservation Trust owns and cares for three parcels, the largest of which is the 59-acre Chamberlain Woods property, providing public access to the woods from Lowell Road. The rest of the protected land in the woods in Concord, nearly 400 acres, is privately held by many separate landowners who have agreed to forego or limit development and to protect particular conservation values through deed restrictions or conservation restrictions. On this private land, the granting of public access varies. From the beginning, Harvard has generously permitted public access on its land for compatible recreation as long as it remains modest and quiet and doesn't interfere with research and conservation efforts, such as the recent reintroduction of Blanding's Turtles. Poncatostic and the land trust properties are also open to the public with certain regulations. There is also, if you look at what's left around the outside of this ring, there is substantial acreage adjoining protected land that is developed, has houses on it, privately held parcels without deed at public access. Some private landowners have given general or limited permission for access on those properties, but private property rights need to be observed throughout the woods. What does this all mean? When you and I enter the woods, we might think we're in public conservation land, but the fact is that on our hike, we might well be passing through land held by several different landowners, including Harvard University and private owners. The burdens of land stewardship and management fall largely on private shoulders. We are guests on these lands through the generosity of owners and a history of warm welcome and courteous visitors. Thanks to the foresight of many individuals and organizations, the woods are still here, and it's important for us to keep in mind this complexity of ownership when we think about how to manage access to this resource. Currently, there are three highly-used access points to the woods in Concord. These are at the entrance to Poncatostic Conservation Land on Monument Street, at the end of Esterbrook Road, and at the entrance to the Concord Land Conservation Trust on Lowell Road. Most visitors to the woods coming in from Concord use these entrances, and as a result, they are the pressure points where challenges are most keenly felt. Looking at the Poncatostic access point, parking here is along the shoulder of Monument Street, which until recently accommodated approximately 13 cars. Recent changes to the driveway at number 851 have effectively reduced that number to around 10 cars. This area has been heavily used for many years, and the entrance to Poncatostic and through the woods has clear public rights of access over town conservation land. Roadside parking at the end of Esterbrook Road can accommodate approximately 11 cars. Prior to the temporary no-parking restriction put in place last year, on busy days, additional cars would park along Esterbrook Road, perhaps 25 or more on certain days. The legal status of public access at this location is currently in dispute. We'll say more about this in a minute. The parking at Chamberlain Woods on Lowell Road is along a wide gravel shoulder, and it can accommodate approximately 16 cars. This area has been lightly used until recently, when anecdotal evidence indicates the number of visitors entering the woods here has increased. This entrance has clear rights of public access through the land trust land. Our committee looked at parking signage, visitor management, and access at these and other locations, and considered whether there are steps that might be taken to more thoughtfully welcome visitors to the woods without negatively impacting the legitimate rights of landowners and while supporting stewardship. I'm going to turn it over to Polly Reeve, my co-chair.
I'm Polly Reeve, and I live at 429 Williams Road. And as Sally said, I'm co-chair with her of this study committee. I'm just going to move this up. So now, we're going to turn to the preliminary recommendations that our committee has proposed. As Sally indicated, these are available in the handout that you can pick up in the back of the room. As you've heard, our committee was pointed by the select board intentionally to represent quite different perspectives, and our differences have led to spirited disagreements and debates. Nevertheless, on the whole, we've been able to listen and learn from one another and have reached consensus on almost all of our preliminary recommendations. In our handout, you can see the areas where we've been unable to agree. They're shaded in gray, and they have to do with whether to keep the no-parking ban in effect on most of Esterbrook Road. Yes, it's true, after all these months of conversation, there is still a point of disagreement among us, and I suspect among you who are here tonight. At the top of page one, you'll see that the committee has singled out what it considers to be the two most important recommendations. One dealing with resolution of certain legal uncertainties at the access of Esterbrook Road, and the other dealing with a new parking area on land near the entrance to Poncatostic. But first, let's briefly go through the recommendations in the order that they appear in the handout. We concluded early in our process that misunderstandings about the extent of private land ownership in the woods and its purpose as a woodland preserve for conservation and research are an important part of the problems that we face. Too many people who come here think that this is a dog park, or that this is all public land. These misunderstandings are exacerbated by the Internet, where information about the woods, both accurate and inaccurate, is broadly available, attracting more users, and sometimes conveying misconceptions about the ownership, purpose, stewardship, and management of the woods. Therefore, our committee recommends posting information signs at each primary access point to help visitors understand the unique nature of the woods and the importance of respect for landowners and responsible stewardship. The committee further recommends that similar information be posted on various websites to encourage more reasonable visitor expectations about the woods, parking, and use. We also recognize that some, but by no means all, visitors, particularly at Esterbrook Road, have failed to treat landowners, other users, and the woods with respect. Examples include trespassing, sometimes blatant and unapologetic, making campfires, creating new trails on private property, failing to keep dogs under control or cleaning up after them, driving vehicles across lawns or in places where they are prohibited, and many other really unacceptable behaviors. There were times when safe access to homes was impeded. These behaviors are inconsistent with both responsible stewardship and common courtesy. Further, we believe that the lack of signage at trailheads and directional signage at certain locations within the woods contributes to conflicts and confusion. Clear communication of expectations is important. So, we're recommending adopting a set of visitor guidelines, which are shown here, to be used throughout the woods. Most of these courtesies are in harmony with the rules and regulations to town conservation land and land trust land, but we recommend going further in one specific area, namely dogs. During 2015, the police reported 15 dog-related incidents at the Esterbrook Road access serious enough to warrant an officer being sent to the scene, and many of the behavior problems that are currently being experienced in Esterbrook Woods involve dogs. These include dog waste pollution, dogs scaring, chasing, knocking over, or biting people or animals, and dogs entering residence, barns, and cars and running loose on roadways. Internet sites have promoted Esterbrook Woods as a destination for dog walking, and professional dog walkers are increasingly bringing their charges to the woods for fresh air and exercise. The result is that dog usage has soared, along with the misunderstanding that the woods are a dog park. Many of us on the committee, we have to admit, are dog lovers, and we know that Esterbrook Woods brings much joy to dogs as well as us humans. But we also feel strongly that stricter limits and clearer expectations pertaining to dogs will be important for the long-term ecological and communal well-being. So, it should be the expectation and norm that all dog waste is picked up and packed out. As a research area and woodland preserve, large numbers of dogs cannot be accommodated. For this reason, we recommend prohibiting commercial dog walkers and limiting the number of dogs per person to two. In order to maintain safety and order at each entry point, dogs should be leashed as they arrive and remain on leash until they pass a leash-release sign, which will be located on each trail at an appropriate distance from the trailhead. On returning, dogs should be leashed up at that same point. And then, the signage related to these rules must be clear and enforcement consistent. We're including suggestions for communicating these rules without causing unnecessary sign pollution, as we've called it, and we urge the Concord Police Department and Natural Resources Division to assist as possible to encourage observance and enforcement of these rules. We have some suggestions for property owners, too. Their generosity in welcoming visitors is greatly appreciated, and we encourage them to protect their property and contribute towards harmonious use of the woods, especially by using modest fences and/or clearly posting signs where visitors are not welcome. Untasteful signs be added at parking areas to show where to park, how to park, and dog-leashing expectations, and that the Concord Trails Committee review and modify as needed, publish maps, signs, and other trail information to harmonize the information available and minimize confusion. As we state in the handout, two very different legal opinions regarding the status of access at the end of Esterbrook Road remain unresolved. We've urged the town to work with town council and direct abutters to resolve legal uncertainties and to secure permanent public access at the end of Esterbrook Road. This is one of our highest priorities. Esterbrook Road was the historic road to Carlisle, dating back to the 17th century. Town records show that the town of Concord in 1932 successfully petitioned the Middlesex County Commissioners to discontinue Esterbrook Road as a public way from a point beyond number 393, where there's now a chain and the paved road ends. Town council is of the opinion that the town's actions in 1932 resulted in the abandonment of the obligation to maintain this portion of Esterbrook Road without giving up public rights of access. Direct abutters disagree, relying on their attorney's legal opinion that in 1932, the vote resulted in the portion of the road beyond 393 becoming a private way with ownership held by direct abutters, each extending to the middle of the way. Pursuant to this interpretation, the neighbors have expressly granted permission for the public use upon certain conditions and have stated that they would like to do so if conditions can be met. They've requested that the town make the temporary parking restrictions permanent and have stated that they would rescind permission for the public use of the access trail if additional parking is created or allowed along the road. The uncertainty resulting from this disagreement has made it difficult for our committee to resolve some of the issues that led to its creation. But the committee does agree on this point, that Esterbrook Woods is an historically significant part of Concord, and assuring public access to the woods here is an urgent priority. We're pleased that the selectman and town manager have been in conversation with the other parties, and we hope that everyone interested in the woods will be patient in giving this matter time for a peaceful resolution of these complicated issues. The question of how many cars should be accommodated around the woods and where was at the heart of nearly every debate our committee had, and consensus was difficult to achieve, as you can see by the gray shading in your handout. First, some background. The town does not have historic data to compare the number and frequency of cars that parked at the various Esterbrook Woods access points 10 years ago, five years ago, two years ago, today, but most agree that the woods are increasingly attracting visitors from across our region. Moreover, most people agree that the recent parking restrictions at Esterbrook Road have limited visits on busy days, and have already had a domino effect in increasing the use of other access points, such as the Chamberlain Woods on Lowell Road. The committee looked for ways to welcome visitors to the Esterbrook Woods that provide safety, security, stewardship, and no undue burden on a single neighborhood. We were looking to accommodate approximately the same number of cars as had been possible before the no-parking restrictions were implemented, while recognizing that shifting parking patterns can bring new challenges. At the end, given our differences of opinion, we recommend several interrelated steps to address parking and access to the woods. Since one of our two highest priorities involves changes at the Poncatostic entrance, let's look more closely at this area. Poncatostic, as many of you know, is a very popular point of entry to the woods, with direct access to public town-owned conservation land. From the trailhead, it's an easy walk to Hutchins Pond and to trails that directly access land owned by Harvard University. Here, we see an aerial view of the entrance to Poncatostic on Monument Street, with shoulder parking along the west side. As Sally said, until late this past summer, there was room for 13 cars here, but a recent driveway curb cut eliminated about three of those, so today, there are 10. Since we started this committee, we've heard from many members of the public that these parking spaces are not ideal, as they are on a busy road and the shoulder is not very generous. The former Apthorpe Land is located at 873 Monument Street. It's this piece right here. It's the four-acre lot on the right as you walk down the entrance driveway to Poncatostic, and it is surrounded by conservation land on all sides. The land was given to the trustees of reservations by the Apthorpe family in 1998. The family retained a life estate, enabling them to stay in the house, which they did into 2006, at which time they released their rights and the trustees took over management of the property. The land was given with no restrictions. The trustees are parties to numerous conservation restrictions in the woods and are currently considering how to use this land. They are open to further conversations with the town to see if there are proposals or outcomes that could be mutually beneficial. A staff member for the trustees, David Santimano, who's here tonight, attended nearly all of our meetings at 7:00 a.m. and followed our process closely. This slide shows the space on the Apthorpe Land where there is the potential for new off-street parking. One of our highest recommendations is that the town work with the trustees to determine the feasibility of this idea. If this parking area can be built, we recommend eliminating on-street parking on Monument Street at this entrance. Providing additional and safer parking here would welcome visitors to the woods at a location where the town has a public purpose and resources. Our preliminary assessment is that 20 to 24 cars could be accommodated in the field near the road. For illustrative purposes, this is roughly the same number as can be accommodated at Miriam's Corner, the parking lot at Miriam's Corner for the Battle Road Trail. The committee was not charged with negotiating on behalf of the town. We do not make a recommendation on what terms might be negotiated, whether this could be a partnership, a lease, a purchase, a memorandum of agreement, or some other structure. This would be something for the selectmen to consider. If this parking area cannot be built or negotiations with the trustees are not fruitful, the committee would reluctantly recommend that the NRC consider a 13-car lot on the Poncatostic conservation land in order to remove on-street parking. The NRC has had preliminary conversations about these two ideas and also prefers the Apthorpe Land proposal. So, our next recommendation on parking concerns Esterbrook Road. This is perhaps the most popular entry to the woods. It really is a very special place. The landowner at 393 has generously accommodated space for approximately 11 cars. Until last winter, it was also possible for cars to park elsewhere along the edge of Esterbrook Road on busy days. The committee estimates that on some peak days, upwards of 25 or more cars might have parked along the road. Right now, with the parking restrictions in effect, these 11 spaces are the only parking allowed on the road. We recommend that the town work with the neighbors to maintain and slightly improve these spaces. This could include design changes, including slightly regrading or relocating parking spaces and removing or relocating boulders that could improve the situation and fully accommodate 11 cars while keeping the rural, historic feeling of the road. The committee did not reach consensus on whether to lift parking restrictions, and if so, how many spaces should be allowed. The following recommendations indicate our split votes, looking at two different scenarios. First, assuming that a parking area can be built at the Apthorpe Land, the majority of the committee recommends that until this parking lot is built, the town temporarily lift a portion of the no-parking restriction on Esterbrook Road, sufficient to provide parking for three to eight additional cars. Once the Apthorpe Lot has been built, the spaces would be removed, with the final number of spaces on the road being 11, and the no-parking restriction on the remainder of Esterbrook Road. A minority of the committee favored no temporary spaces. If a parking lot cannot be built at the Apthorpe Land, our second scenario, a majority of the committee recommends adding parallel parking on the west side of Esterbrook Road for five to 11 more cars south of number 299. Deciding on the exact number of spaces was difficult, given the uncertainty over the legal rights of abutters to close the access and their intent to close it if additional spaces are added. Providing additional parking spaces was not a consensus decision. Our final parking recommendation deals with Monument Farm Road. As mentioned earlier by Sally, there is a 14.6-acre parcel of town conservation land located on Monument Farm Road near the Carlisle town line. The conservation land was transferred to the town when the Monument Farm subdivision was approved. The parcel wraps around the development to the south and then runs along Two-Rod Road and the eastern border of land owned by Harvard University. Much of this land is wet. Much of this land is wet. The deed grants the town the right to mow the field and to maintain the drainage on the property. There are two existing trails that run from Monument Farm Road into the Esterbrook Woods that are used by the neighborhood. Currently, there are no signs of the deeded trail access, and there's a small trail marker at the conservation land trail. There is no provision for parking. The committee recommends that the Natural Resources Commission review deeds and approvals and work with neighbors, including Harvard and Carlisle, in order to accommodate parking for three to five cars on the town's frontage on Monument Farm Road. The existing trail would need to be rerouted to be entirely on-town property, requiring bog bridges in a few locations. This chart summarizes the sum of our parking proposals. I know it's hard to absorb on this screen, but it's also available as a handout in the back of the room. It shows that the end result of these proposals, if implemented, would be similar overall woods parking capacity as before the parking restrictions were put in place on Esterbrook Road, but with the impact shared by different locations. You'll see in our report, the committee also makes other recommendations for each of the access points, dealing with signage, snow plowing, trail adjustments, and avoiding conflicts with private owners. In the interest of allowing more time for your comments, we won't go into detail on these now, but you can see the specifics in the handout. We recognize that issues are likely to arise around the woods in the future after our committee is disbanded, and we recommend that a group, informal or formal, be constituted to discuss issues and build consensus around solutions and keep the towns of Concord and Carlisle, the various land trusts, landowners, and visitors on the same page and working cooperatively into the future. Finally, there are a few things that we discussed but are not recommending at this time. If issues persist, they might be considered in the future. These things included parking by permit-only, resident-only parking, adopting a leash requirement throughout the woods, and prohibiting dogs altogether in Esterbrook Woods. And just to repeat, these are not things that we're recommending at this time. We did discuss them, though. In conclusion, I want to add that as a committee, we recognize that the conflicts we faced in the last few months at the Esterbrook Road trailhead are not unique. These kinds of issues have arisen at many beaches, parks, and other wild areas around the country and around the world, but this doesn't mean that they're simple to address. Balancing our stated objectives is not an easy matter. Nevertheless, we really do believe that it is possible. Over the course of the past six months, we've been committed to respectfully and seriously working together toward a thoughtful resolution, and we welcome your comments in the same spirit. So I'm going to turn it back over to Sally, who will be our moderator for the rest of
Thank you, and I thank you for your patience in listening to what was a long presentation, but we wanted to let everyone at home and all of you here sort of hear the thinking behind our recommendations. So at this point, I will just remind you that we're being recorded by CCTV. It's being broadcast live tonight. The microphone in the center of the room, it would be a very convenient place if anyone would like to make a comment. If you could just make your way to that microphone and speak into it so that they pick it up on the TV. If you could state your name and address for our records, we'll be taking notes tonight. And in order to hear as many people as possible, we just ask you to keep your comments brief to a couple minutes so that everybody gets a chance to speak. So we welcome your thoughts.
My name's George Corret. I'm at 148 Peter Spring Road. I think the things like signage are probably the most important things, and that would include the internet website. Maybe it could even include a Concord app with GPS, because the technology of the automobile is changing a lot in the next five years with things like Uber and Lyft. Pretty much, it's going to change as much as it did with the introduction of the Model T. So just like in the old, you know, before the Model T, if you were rich enough to have a chauffeur, you were not restricted in where you could go, because the chauffeur would just drop you off and then you'd pick you up when you were ready. But things like Uber and Lyft are going to be coming in more, and so people will be able to go anywhere they want, anytime they want, without parking. Parking will no longer be a technique that you can use to, you know, enforce exclusivity and things like that. So I think that's something for the landowners especially to keep in mind, too, that the world is changing with respect to that.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Katie Pollak. I live at 9 Holden Wood Road, Concord, Mass. I think we need to restore parking at Esterbrook Road. Thanks. I know in some of the meetings, some people on the committee suggested adding temporary parking to see how it goes. I think that that idea is a great one, because the behavior is getting better and there are not enough parking spots to fit everyone in on busier days. My mom went there on a weekday morning, and nine cars had taken up all the spaces, so she couldn't park legally. I also understand that the landowners want to have quiet, so there could be quiet hours, maybe 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM, or you could change your tolerance preference. Please consider these suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Hi, my name is Dinah Beigner-Visher, and I live at 299 Esterbrook Road. The recommended additional street parking is directly in front of my house. Thank you. Thanks. No, I can't. I don't like to hold it because I can't turn. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, can I start over?
Thank you, Dinah.
Hello, my name is Dinah Beigner-Visher, and I live at 299 Esterbrook Road. The recommended additional street parking is directly in front of my house and along my old stone wall. I would like to make three points tonight. First, that Esterbrook residents near the woods have been very generous and accommodating to the public. Second, that these are real, not assumed, critical safety issues we are living with on our dead-end, narrow country road. Third, there are better public access and parking solutions that can create balance among trailheads and not overburden Esterbrook Road. So my first point, generosity. As we know, some residents created on-street parking 20 years ago and made turnaround spaces recently, at their own expense, on their own private property, for the use of everyone. These actions, plus the conservation restrictions many of us have put on our own lands, I hope underscore that we all try to accommodate enjoyment and public access to Esterbrook Woods. My second point is safety as priority. The biggest issues around expanding parking, even temporarily, are almost entirely about safety, for those of us who live on this road and those who visit. Any time of year, Esterbrook Road shoulders can be blocked with snow, ice, or mud, yet people still park anyway if the signs are there saying they can, even if they can't park there, they will. If they can't physically park there, they will. So we either have cars parked three to six feet into the road, or stuck in the shoulder and unable to get out, sometimes blocking the road for several hours as people enjoy the woods. The current signs work. Additional parking along my stone wall or on any other edges of Esterbrook Road would jeopardize the current configuration that keeps us all safe. In the recent past, additional parking caused the following events on our street continually: emergency vehicles impeded from entering and exiting rescue areas, plows unable to service the road properly, residents and service providers blocked from our homes. I also want to note that the recommended additional parking area is within 20 feet of the wellhead on my property, where my family's drinking water comes from. Because Esterbrook Road is a dead end and not a flow-through road, one car poorly parked could create a life-or-death situation for any of us who live there or any of us who visit. I think safety should be a priority criteria, or the priority criteria, in these decisions for Esterbrook Woods, um, Esterbrook Road, excuse me. We residents welcome visitors to Esterbrook Road and its access point to the woods, and only ask that visitors respect our limits of safety. And finally, my third point, a balanced, public, not private solution. Everyone who wants to access Esterbrook Woods should be able to do so. The need for additional parking may be real, but expanding the parking area in front of people's houses on a narrow, dead-end street is not a safer, sensible way to do it, even temporarily. I personally hope to see the parking area at Panketacit expanded as soon as possible, and I urge the town to adopt that alternative as a safer and more sensible solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dinah.
28 Nimrod Drive. I want to make the recommendation that you do not put temporary parking, let alone permanent parking, on Esterbrook Road. I have periodically, over the years, lived in the brick house on the Esterbrook path. I've been living there for the last year, and it is de facto a dog park right now. When you walk through with your dog, you see a snapshot of the day. You don't see the whole day, and the whole day is out of control. Just to give you some examples, I was going out to work the other morning. I had a 7:15 meeting. Dog standing there, barking at me, hackles up. Well, I love dogs. I'm not afraid of them, but I looked for the owner. The owner was jogging, and when I spoke to the owner about please bring a leash next time, the dog came around, jumped on my back. So now I have dog prints, and I have to go in and change my clothes. I'm late for a meeting. This morning, in the dark, there's someone outside the house, right? So do I have to keep the shades down in the dark in the morning, too? I have to keep the curtains closed all the time now next to the path, because there are people there constantly. I drove out tonight in the dark. There's a person there again in the car. The dog waste is absolutely absurd. The number of dogs that come in and people leave the dog waste there. One person, I mean, it'd be funny on America's Funniest Videos, but there he is trying to cover it up with leaves, right, rather than taking it out. About 20% of the people are still not leashing their dogs. 10% of those people, when I speak to them, are exceptionally rude. I can't even say the kind of types of things that they say to me when I ask them please to leash the dog, because we've had problems with the dogs going in the horse pastures, coming in the houses, and we've had problems with the dogs with the horses and with elderly people on the path. I've had elderly people tell me that they are afraid of dogs, and that dog owners assume that it's okay for dogs to come running up to them. So they have difficulty. I had a woman from Arlington tell me that, I saw her trying to bring her dog into the woods and the dog wouldn't go, and she told me the dog had been attacked twice in the woods, once requiring surgery. She tried the last time to get the dog to go in, but it wouldn't, so I suggested that she go to the national park. The noise level is horrible. People wake me up every single morning, and there are about eight dogs that have bells, two of which have cowbells on, and I can hear them coming all the way up the trail and all the way down the trail. People are on the stone wall, a Boy Scout troop on the stone wall with the adults there. When I spoke to them, the adults ignored me. There was a family with little children on the stone wall last week. They threw parts, and this is a dry-laid stone wall. They picked up the stones and they threw them on the grass. Now, a mower could come along and someone could be hurt with that stone, right? People have taken things from the property. We have also, I've also had someone pounce a lacrosse ball off the brick house, and I had to come out and ask them, there they are with their lacrosticks, not to bounce it off the house. People going in with open carry alcohol. It is, the other day when I came back home, just in one hour, I had to go out seven times and ask people to please put their dogs on a leash. So some people are wonderful and polite, but there's 20% that are just horrible, and I would, if I were the owner here, I would close this place to dogs and to bikes, because now there are packs of bikes coming, and they're coming because it's on the internet, and I had to get out of the way of bikes, twice, packs of bikes, and I've seen elderly people nervous about the bikes as well. So I would not recommend any more parking on Esterbrook. It's already out of control.
Thank you, Susan.
In the, the recommend, the initial--
Excuse me, can I just have you--
Oh, my name is Paul Jameson. I'm at 419 College Road in Concord. I would like to say that there's been very little consideration of the rights of the public to use an old road. It's my understanding that the town lawyer has supported the idea that the road was, that there should be public access on the road by right. They should, they are not welcome visitors. They are people who, in my opinion, should have a right to get onto that road, and I think Esterbrook Road is a public road and should be treated as like any other public road where the public can come. And I can, I live on College Road, and I cannot control the traffic on College Road. I mean, it's out of my control. If there's problems with behavior, perhaps the police should come or other means of monitoring. But I think that you've neglected, in all these recommendations, you've neglected the right of the public to, for access to that old road to Carlisle and into the woods. You're treating it as if they're visitors when they have a right to be there.
Thank you, Paul.
Eric Green, 52, Devon Street. I'd like to thank the members of the committee for all the work they've done and all their excellent recommendations in general. I think you've done a great service on a very controversial issue. I do have some comments on the draft report. First of all, I think the number-one priority for everybody needs to be the preservation and protection of the natural resource, which is the woods, because that will outlive us all. I've been in the woods a lot there and studied it as much as I can, looked at it. I did another site visit this past week. I do not see and I have not heard of any threat to the natural resource based on the utilization of the woods by the public over the years. So I don't think that that should be a reason to cut off or restrict access. Secondly, I think the access to the woods requires a reasonable balance by the town of the rights of the neighbors in the neighborhood and of the public who have a right to use those woods and have used it for a long time. I want to express my respect and admiration for the Rasmussons, who have nurtured the woods and who have generously welcomed people to the land that they own there. They've been excellent citizens and stewards of Concord in many respects. But I must say that I share the opinion of the previous speaker, that if Town Council's opinion is correct, that the town has, retains and has always retained a right of access through this path, I find it very difficult to understand how the town or a committee of the town could do anything to restrict or derogate or give away the public's long-held access to those lands. I don't see how that would be consistent with the duty of a town committee or a town official, and I'd be very surprised if they do that. I also want to say that I'd be very cautious in considering the construction of parking lots for the woods. Personally, speaking strictly for me, I wouldn't want to be part of anybody who paved paradise to put up a parking lot. So any kind of parking lot that you think of erecting, I think should be minimal. It should be rustic, and I think you have to be aware that you could be simply moving an inconvenience from one neighborhood to another, and I'm not sure what that gets you or why that would be fair to the receptive neighborhood. I, like many people in Concord, live in a part of town that has its own very special delights and attractions, but that means I also have to accept some of the visiting and noise and inconvenience that that brings. It happens to be the center of town. I live on a street with no sidewalks whatsoever, and if there's a busy affair at the Emerson Playground or the Umbrella or other things in town, we have to put up with the annoyance and the inconvenience. in town, we have to put up with the annoyance and the inconvenience that comes with that. And that comes almost on a daily basis. Now, there are many things that we can do to help balance the effect on the neighbors. And we should be doing them. And we should be assisting the neighbors to do that. Signage, education, maybe some nice split rail fences to protect the neighbors' walls, to protect the horses in the pasture next to the entryway. I ride horses. I ride horses in the Estabrook Woods. And I will tell you that the horse riders, a horse rider who has spoken out about this does not speak for the horse-riding community. We understand that we, as horse owners, have the responsibility to take care of our animals and to keep them safe and to control them. And that we don't have the right to ride our horses down trails and expect everybody else to get out of the way or yield to those. I've come off my horse in those woods when I've come around the bend and there's been a person hiking there and walking his dog. And that's on me. That's not on the hiker. I don't understand why, if dogs are a problem for the neighbor who has horses at the entrance there, why that owner hasn't put up a nice wire fence to keep the dogs out. And if it's something the neighbor doesn't want to do, the town should do it because it's a town right of access. And if the neighbor won't do it and the town won't do it, I'll do it for them. I will undertake a subscription.
Thank you for your offer, but no, thank you.
Well, then you should do it. And you should know better that dogs and horses don't-
I'd really like to, I think that your comments are getting a little personal because you're singling out a specific household. If you could keep them from going there and also, I think, direct all the comments to the chair. So, thank you.
Okay. So everybody knows dogs and horses need to be separated or else there's a dangerous situation. There's a very simple solution to do that. And we should do that for the safety of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Hi, my name is Karen Kirsten, 280 Estabrook Road. I'd also like to thank the committee for all their time and commitment to resolving the issues around our precious woods. My husband and I rented a home in Concord for some years when we accessed the woods mostly from Monument Street and sometimes from Estabrook Road. In 2015, we were suddenly in a position to be able to acquire 280 Estabrook Road and the street we had long treasured, like we all do, for its history and the nature of the land. The scenic nature of the land in Estabrook Road approaching the woods is treasured not only by those who live in the street, but many in the town and beyond. The view coming up the street of the Emerson Caretaker House at number 299, where parking is now proposed, and the antique home and barns owned by the Rasmusins at the entrance to the privately-owned woods. In my personal case, family and friends from around the country and overseas have never failed to remark over the years when walking with us from North Bridge into the woods at the end of Estabrook that it is indeed a spectacular corner of the world, rare in its proximity to a major city, filled with agricultural and rural beauty. After we purchased the property, temporary parking was permitted in front of the conservation field at 299. On weekends, we were alarmed to observe people exiting cars there, dodging the cars arriving and leaving from the end of the street, and young children on foot and bikes walking up the middle of the street dodging those cars. If parking is reinstated, I'm concerned that it would only be a matter of time before someone is hit by a car or worse, killed. Also, on multiple occasions, we observed the cars parked at the stone wall of 299 entering Dinah Bushner's circular driveway and using the full circle to exit the street, even when her dogs were in the yard at risk of being hit and killed. And as you're aware, many of you might be aware, there was a dog killed, the Reed's dog, at the end of Estabrook Road when someone drove into their driveway, ran over the dog, and left. And I also am a dog lover. Since the temporary parking has been removed and measures such as signage have been put into place, things have improved. Since May, traffic counts show that only on a few peak weekend days has the parking ever been full at Estabrook Road, and only a few cars have not been able to park, and then it was only for a few minutes. Every time I and others have driven past the Chamberlain Woods, it's good to see people have learned that the woods are there and they're beginning to park there, but there's still been plenty of parking. We've also thankfully seen an increase in people leashing the wood, leashing their dogs at the entry into the woods. And thanks to the signs, people are now aware that this is private property, private land. There are fewer conflicts with livestock trespassing onto private property, but they still do occur. Importantly, to me, as a dog owner, no more dogs have been killed. But if the town were to reverse the no-parking zone at 299, an increase in traffic would risk the safety of visitors, pets, and residents because there's no direct access into the woods from that location. You still have to walk up that narrow road. So I support the recommendation of an off-road parking lot at Monument Street at Pankett Tasset, as it has always been an awkward and unsafe area to park, and now is even more so with the reduced parking there. Off-road parking would address parking and safety needs and reduce any need for additional overflow parking in Estabrook Road, particularly because people will be more aware of the Chamberlain Woods parking lot and also the Monument Farm area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Hi, oh, too loud. I'm Abby White and I am the landowner, the homeowner, at 851 Monument Street, which is the infamous parking, the-
Circular driveway.
Circular driveway that we've been talking about. And I want to clarify a couple of things for everyone. I'm sorry, am I speaking too loudly?
No, I think you're doing fine.
So the driveway that we created was deeded in to our property. We had two curb cuts. We purchased the property a year ago. So I would just argue that the 13 parking spaces really were two openings that were frequently parked in front of, then were not technically meant to be parking spaces. And several of the parking spaces, I think, that are included in that count are also not a full car width from Monument Street. So not really that safe with a road that's 30 miles per hour, that's more often driven at 40 miles per hour. So, but that said, I want to go back and thank the committee for all the work that you've done because I think you've done some really thorough research. And being a mother of three children in the Concord schools and having grown up here and now working full-time in town, I, I don't have time to be on a committee like this, but someday I, I hope to join you. So, but thank you for your time. I echo, being one of the few voices of land ownership abutting the Estabrook Woods because we have, there is a rental property on the Concord Land, the Land Conservation Trust land that has two families. But we're really the only taxpayers that are affected by this on Monument Street. And I'm speaking for my husband, Tim, also, who is at a board meeting, board meeting tonight and couldn't be here. We want to be a voice. I echo many of the safety concerns of the, the folks on Estabrook Road as far as cars turning around and, and whipping into park. And, and we've, we've already spoken about those things. I think that's a well-known concern from any access point where there are families living, abutting those points and cars coming in and out that honestly, from my, from, from just looking at it over the year and spending a lot of time on the trails next to our property and watching people come in and out constantly throughout the day, use our driveway, old driveway, new driveway as a place to do a, a three-point turn and turn around or even come into the, the parking from the wrong direction, really parking, going the wrong way and then having to turn around to go back towards town. We, there are, there are definitely some Concord residents who are doing this or Carlisle residents, but a lot of the folks are coming from afar. And I don't want to have a bias towards one or the other, but it, there's a difference in the obedience of rules when you live in town, you have a, people around you that you know and need to uphold some values in their presence. It's just, it's, there's a little bit of a difference in that, not across the board, but just, I, I do want to mention that, that the signage is, I think, would be welcome, but the enforcement is the important part. So as far as putting parking in a, in the form of a parking lot there, my concerns would be around safety after dark, before it gets, before it gets light in the morning, and having it out of sight from the road at any point or just because of the, the lack of proximity to town where there is more circulation with our safety officers, it does concern me. And Pankett Tasset has, we, we have visitors until, we being, you know, we see the cars coming and parking into the wee hours. I mean, people will go back with their headlamps and do geocaching back in the woods and, and there's, I, I would love to think that it could be shut down at dusk, but I think that needs to be enforced to really be a reality. We own a dog. We love dogs. We love the dogs that come and visit, but we certainly would want them to be under control. So I think that's also something, I think your recommendations around dogs are wonderful. They need to be enforced if they're really, truly going to be a reality. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. Abby, I'm sorry, not Amy, Abby.
Hi, my name is Liz Goldsmith, and I am not a Concord resident, although my horses live on Estabrook Road. So I am by proxy. I am, my 15 minutes of fame in this town occurred when I was the rider who was attacked by dogs in Estabrook Woods. And I am not against dogs and I am not against horses and dogs. But what I am against is dogs that are under, that are out of control. I would say that 90% of the people that I meet in the woods are very polite, their dogs are under control, and they and I both make an effort to coexist. I meet about 10% of dogs who are either not with an owner at all, or I can't find the owner, or they show up at the barn, or they show up in the field with my horses. I own the horses that are in the field that abut the trail system. And it's not just a concern for my horses, it's also a concern for the owners of the dogs and for the dogs. Because if my 1,400-pound horse kicks your dog, it's not going to be doing very well after that. And I would prefer that not to happen because I like dogs. If your dog chases my horse, and I have a large veterinary bill, I'm not going to be happy about that either. So I think it's a, it's a very, I think that the town has made, the committee made some good recommendations in terms of limiting the parking and also having dogs on leashes further down into the trail system. Personally, I would like to see dogs leashed at all times because I don't see that dogs are always under control. And I don't think it's only the horseback riders that are at risk. I have, in the last couple of weeks, I have encountered dogs on leashes on that private land, on that access road, that the dogs were straining at the leashes, growling and barking. And the owner said to me, "I am so glad I didn't meet you out in the woods or they would have been off-leash." And I said, "Me too," because I didn't want to deal with that. But back to the original premise of parking, I am on Estabrook Woods Road almost every day, sometimes twice a day. And I will tell you that since the committee started meeting, I have been keeping an informal survey of how many cars are parked in the parking lot and the spaces. And I cannot, I cannot remember a single day where I saw cars had to leave. Almost every day that I'm there, there are three or four spaces that are available and the turnover is pretty rapid. Now, I think that the, the signage that's been done has really helped spread the burden. I think that having the signage at Chamberlain Field is a great idea. I have never seen more than four cars parked there. You had a picture of like 10, and I don't know how you managed to do that because I go up and down Lowell Road all the time. But I think it's a wonderful idea to have more parking available. I think that Monument Farm Road is an underutilized resource, and I question why you're only going to put parking in front of the townland and not subject the private landowners on Monument Farm Road to the same problem that, that owners on Estabrook Road are being asked to bear. You said that you were only going to put the parking in that very narrow spot, which is about three spaces. But there's plenty of parking on Monument Farm Road, and there's a very nice trail that goes right to 2-Rod Road. So I, I would urge the committee to look at expanding parking and spreading the burden more so that you don't have so many cars on Estabrook Roads, at Road. Places for people to access Estabrook Woods, and it is not being restricted to the public. What you are doing is putting the burden on one road, which happens to be very beautiful. But that doesn't mean that people have a right to park on that road if access to the woods is not restricted.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Henshman. I live on 1 Greenfield Lane, and I have a handout for the committee.
Oh, thank you.
You're very lucky. I've been through the hard times. Now, I want to talk about another aspect of what we've been talking about tonight, and that is the dynamic aspect. You've been talking about, very correctly, the static aspect of putting down parking places. We live in a dynamic world, a very dangerous world, and the entry to the Estabrook Woods from Pankett Tasset is exceedingly dangerous. There is an S-bend corner there, and it really is a death trap waiting to happen. And so anything you do should be addressing this particular crucial issue. There's increasingly heavy traffic on Monument Street. This afternoon, when I was up there, two massive trucks came by. My dog was nearly killed by a massive truck two weeks ago. And therefore, we have to face up to the fact that something has to be done about traffic going through that S-bend corner. What does that mean? It means taking the ludicrous 30 mile per hour speed limit from the east end of the Hutchins Farm Wall and putting it at the west end of the Hutchins Farm Wall so that people start to slow down before they approach that S-bend. That whole S-bend needs to be striped to indicate to people that it's a danger area because we have not only cars and things, we have phalanxes of cyclists swinging down into that S-bend after climbing up a Pankett Tasset hill, and they don't heed caution either. So let me talk about the interim solution of parking on Pankett Tasset entry. I was up there this afternoon, and I have some very bad news for you. Four of those parking places on the side of the road have disappeared. Somebody's gone up and put signs up saying, "No parking here, no parking here." So we're now actually down to seven parking places on the Pankett Tasset entry to the Estabrook Woods. I don't think they're a good idea, and I think what we need is a parking area somewhere to get all the parking off the side of the road. Now, something that has not been addressed here, which is extremely critical, is the fact that when you go to Pankett Tasset from Concord, you drive up eastwards, and when you get there, you have to turn around and park on the north side of Monument Street. That turnaround is lethal, absolutely lethal. Now, in the old days, people used to do it by turning into the old driveway of 851. And so you never really had to edge out at right angles to the road. You could just do it by slipping out. That's now gone, thank goodness, because that was dangerous. So now the only way you can do a turnaround is to turn into somebody's driveway and reverse out into Monument Street. Now, if you're a law-abiding citizen like I am, I don't do that. I drive a quarter of a mile up Monument Street, and I turn right into whatever it's called, Brick Butrick Hill Road, and I turn around in the entryway to number 1,200 Monument Street, which they must love. But because it's a side road, I can do that without fear to myself or to other people traveling up and down Monument Street. That is not a solution to the problem of turning around when you leave Concord and you want to turn around- of turning around when you leave Concord and you want to turn around and come back to Poncatasay, and that is a problem we all have to address. It's a very serious problem. It's likewise a problem, too, if that parking lot is put on the Abthorrt land. People will come out from Concord, they have to turn around to turn into the Abthorrt land. So, the number of parking places at the moment are at the Monument Street exit, has gone down from 16 to 7, and it'll be some time before the parking lot is built on the Abthorrt land, if it is, and somebody should be worrying about the fact that there aren't any parking lots on the side of the, north side of Monument Street. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your handout.
Hi, my name is Andrew Bewinner. So I'm resident of Concord, 353 Deacon Haynes Road, but I'm also the Harvard's Professor Director of Concord Field Station, and tasked with overseeing how Harvard's land is used in the Estabrook Woods. And I would just like to remind people that it is private land, it was generously donated by Concord landowners, but its purpose is for conservation, research, and teaching. And so while Harvard is fine with having the public use the land, and I think that the question of whether the Estabrook Road is in fact a public way, and people have public access to it, I think that's still somewhat debatable. But the point is, any of the land off Estabrook Road is private land, whether it's the Rasmussen's land or Harvard's land. So I would ask the public, while clearly the parking issues on Estabrook Road, Monument Street are critically challenging, those of you that enjoy the woods as I do with my dog, make sure that you treat it with respect. And I think what we're hearing is the increased use of the woods, and the increased use especially for people that are walking dogs. There's a minority that creates a lot of challenges for local landowners that are abutting Estabrook Woods, as well as potentially the negative impact it has on the woods. So I would ask people to remember that the woods is there to be shared and enjoyed by everybody, but it has pre-remotely an important role in conservation, research, and teaching, and that it is private land, and so while you may have public access to it, you need to treat it respectfully. Thank you.
Andy, thank you very much.
Tom Sattler, 51 Chestnut Street in Concord, and I just have a couple of points. One is people have been saying there, people are now using the Chamberlain Woods access point. I've done that, it's really confusing. It's very hard to get over. I have tried three times and been unable to get to Estabrook Road. It's surrounded by private property or property that's owned by the Middlesex School. It's just not an easy, so the idea that this is all Estabrook Woods, one access is the same as the other, I think is a mistake, that it is just, it's not the same, it's not what, the same experience, it's not the same road. So that's the first one. I think we are mistakenly saying it's easy for people to go over there. The other one has to do with the number of cars parked on Estabrook Road. Since this committee has formed and the problem has been, I've stopped going over there, I've made other choices. So it's not that I wouldn't, I just have not risked having to wait for a car to leave or not have a place to park. And so again, I think it's a mistake to say, "Oh, there are parking spaces there, it's not a problem." I think what has happened is that people have avoided using it. So, two issues around parking. The other one is I think we confuse poor behavior with parking. It was an interesting point made, which is there are lots of other ways for people to get to Estabrook Woods and Estabrook Roads. Some may be for Uber or Lyft, which we don't think about out here, but I was in Brooklyn last weekend and used it all the time, and people do use other things, bicycles. So I think having good signage is really important. A lot of the complaints that I've heard were really before signs were changed. As I walked in after hearing about the problem initially, I started looking for signs. There is a sign that says, "Leash is required past this point," but it's on the chain facing out to the road. I read that, and I thought, "Oh, good. I don't need a leash on the dirt property from here on." You know, it's just a sort of simple thing, that if you have good signs, then I think you need to understand, has the behavior changed? And there will be bad behavior, people will do bad things, but I think you have to really differentiate between bad behavior and parking spaces. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Hi.
Michael Duttelbach, 89 Assabet Avenue, Concord. I want to second everything that Tom, he took, he took most of my points away from me. It's okay. I, too, I've been walking in those woods for 25 years. It used to be almost entirely from the Estabrook Road access. I've stopped using it and done the turnaround dance on Monument Street at Poncatasay more and more. Also a walk I love. So I want to reemphasize that point. Also, reemphasize the point that the different entrances are not fungible, they're not, they're not identical to one another. You can't do the same walk, depending on how much time you have and what you're with, they're, they're not exchangeable with, with one another. And so it's not the same to go all the way up to Monument Farm as it is to walk from the end of Estabrook. So, the walk that I would do with my kids while they were growing up, they're about to graduate from the high school now, but since they were extremely little, walking around Mink Pond, and sometimes through the Boulder Field up that way, or by the old marble mines were the walks we do. And those are much harder to do from, obviously, the other points, so they're not the same. And unfortunately, we have avoided going to the Estabrook Woods. Now, they don't walk with me much anymore, I got to confess. Also, I want to reemphasize, I want to second the point that the bad behaviors that were cited, I think especially the lack of picking up dog waste, which we all confront, not just in Estabrook Woods, but in many of the places where dogs walk. I don't understand people who bag their waste and leave it there, I just don't understand that. And, and the dogs that are not under control, all the, much less the trespassing, or the, which I've never seen myself, but I certainly see the dog waste. Those are all already illegal and already bad behaviors, and I don't see how the issue of whether or not we put three to eight temporary parking spaces on Estabrook Road is going to change that. That's an issue of enforcement, as has been pointed out, and an issue of education, and I want to commend the committee. And I'm really thankful for this process, because I think it has educated people a lot to issues that were not talked about or not brought up systematically before. So I thank you for that. But I think education should not be underrated as a, as a solution to the behavior problems. And I don't see, I'd like to see us separate the parking from the behavior problems. I think they're separate things. And finally, I just wanted to know from the committee, is the data upon which their recommendations and their study is based available, especially the, the traffic parking data and the police citation data? Because I, as I, as I've read about this in the press and heard about it and talked with people before, I hear a lot of the anecdotes, and we all remember the winter of 2014, 15, the very difficult winter, and I do remember those cars parked out in the middle of the road, and that was horri, I mean, that was, that was bad. But I would like to see the data on which the, the study and the recommendations were based, just.
Thank you. What there is, is the, the police records exist, the calls for when the police were called out to that neighborhood, and that's available through the police department.
So the committee themselves have not put together, have not?
We, we've looked at an analysis of those couple of years of when, when the calls came in, and, and we know that there, we, we've heard specifically some of the anecdotes, that, oh, this particular day there was an L.L. Bean trip, or this particular day there was an Orientarian trip, and you can see some of that happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna West Winter, 393 Estabrook Road.
Hi, Anna.
I want to thank the chairs of this committee. They have done a remarkable job, and every single one of you that has made those 7:00 AM meetings, I thank you for all your hard work on this incredibly complex issue. We certainly commend the committee for their recommendation to provide safe and adequate parking at the Poncatasay access point. This site is in fact the town-owned public property, and currently it offers less parking than at Estabrook Road. As many people understand, the Estabrook Road access is not the access to townland. The Estabrook Road Trail is a private access point, leading to private land owned by three families and by Harvard University. With adequate and safe parking available at public access sites, it is inappropriate for the town to create additional parking for the use of a private access to access private lands unless this action is deemed both safe for and agreeable to all impacted private landowners. Harvard University and a private residence together own 66% of Estabrook Woods in Concord. A significant concern for both land stewards is the rapid transformation we have all seen in the increase in the presence of dogs in the woods, and I too am a dog lover. Harvard's research mission can only be fulfilled if the lands and the wildlife habitat are not overrun with an unnatural influx of predatory animals. In short, the Harvard land nor the private land abutting this land can be turned into what many are starting to call this area a regional dog park. In fact, people have come and argued with me in my own backyard, that this is indeed not my backyard, but indeed a dog park. "Go look on the internet," they say, "you, you will see." So I'm educated, basically on a daily basis. Any further expansion of parking on Estabrook Road is a threat to the protection of private conservation and research lands. Counts show that 80% of visitors to the Estabrook Woods' private access point bring a dog. If you take the number of dogs entering this private land on Estabrook Road alone last week and annualize it, this is a rate of over 12,000 dogs per year. 12,000 dogs are accommodated on privately-owned conservation land. Most of these dogs relieve themselves during their visit, and sadly, it is a rarity that the walkers clean up after their dogs, despite the signs and town regulations requiring the picking up of dog waste. Dogs run wild in the woods, and the end, an unavoidable result, is that they significantly disturb the wildlife. There's almost no place in the woods where wildlife can reside at a safe distance from a trail with a loose dog on it. We know that many other lands used for conservation and research do not allow dogs, including all Audubon properties and the Great Meadows National Wildlife Refuge. At open public areas such as Minuteman National Park, dogs are required to be on leash at all times. Any further increase in parking on Estabrook Road will further increase the number of dogs impacting the woods and the wildlife. If the action to increase parking was taken, then the landowners and Harvard may be forced to restrict dogs completely on the conservation land. It would be beneficial for the committee to take these significant conservation issues into account before they recommend any increased parking at Estabrook Road. Given that the owners of these properties, along with Harvard University, take the stewardship of these woods very seriously, and may need to implement restrictions on dog access if parking were to be increased. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. It's okay, it's a very, it's a very delicately balanced microphone. Replacing the batteries, we'll all be back up in just a minute.
I won't touch it.
Thank you, Ellie.
Ellie Bemis, 858 Monument Street. Again, thank the committee. I think your suggestion of just two dogs is, is a really good one. You know, there are handfuls of dogs going in on the Poncatasay entrance, too, and yes, I'm a dog lover. I think, I have also, I think the nightmare that's happened on Estabrook Road is, has been horrible for neighbors, and they have every reason to be very upset and to initiate this whole process. But I just worry that the problem is going to be, by increasing a parking lot of 20 to 22 cars at Poncatasay, is going to move the issue from Estabrook over to Poncatasay. And yes, Poncatasay was bought by the town as an area for recreation, so it is appropriate place for people to come and visit. And I'm glad that Andy Bewinner spoke up from Harvard, because to me, that is the core of the woods, and the major central purpose of the woods is the conservation and being a place for field studies. And the thing is, if you go in at Poncatasay, it just blends into Estabrook. There's, if it was a defined recreation area, that would be one thing, but the woods are all one. So I'm worried about moving the problem from one area to another. You know, I think it would be appropriate to have a parking lot of, you know, I don't know, 10 to 15 spaces, but 20 to 22 is a lot. The whole notion of limiting growth is an okay thing to do. I don't think we have to continue to provide more and more parking for everyone. I think the idea of distributing it around town, Concord is blessed with all of its open spaces. I think it's the best thing about Concord. But it seems like the more we can have small parking areas for all our open spaces, that's the way to go. You know, and if you get there too late and you don't get a space, you missed out, just like you do at Walden Pond if, if you don't get there in time. I also think maybe we shouldn't allow bikes.
Thank you, Ellie.
Susanna Reed, 366 Estabrook Road.
Hi, Susanna.
Hi. I'd like to thank the committee for all of the work it's done and the conclusions it seems to have arrived at so far for recommendations. I would like to note, it's rather intriguing that the Rasmussens and the Reeds are called butters when we're actually owners of that path, and the town does not dispute that. They just dispute whether or not we are going to be able to close it if parking is increased. So these are actually owners, not butters, of the woods, one. Two, my actual point was about dogs. I thought you made a very interesting comment at the start about, historically, visitors have been made to feel warm and welcome when they have been courteous. For many years, people have sort of been on a downward trend of the courteous level, when the dogs have increased and gone wild. As these restrictions in parking have been implemented, we have noticed a marked improvement in the behavior of dog walkers and the dogs, and exclusion of the business dog-walking people has immensely improved the overall existence. People don't come with four dogs each and four walkers meeting up and having 16 dogs running wild. No matter what fencing you put up, they will I'd also like to bring up the point, there's a big problem in Concord at White Pond with dogs glowing in the water. That's uncontrolled at Mink Pond, it's uncontrolled at Hutchins, and it may be well worth natural resources or other private sectors looking at the effect all these dogs are having, because it can't be just in one pond. The other thing is, we actually do have data, and we have data because there are video cameras up on Estabrook, because we have people climbing into pastures, and we have people feeding horses in the middle of private pastures over triple-rail fences and a steel fence. And we do show, and we have the numbers, and I'll be happy to provide you that data, that at no time except for one day, has there been more than a three-to-five-minute wait for a space on average. And so almost every single day, there is capacity at Estabrook, as it stands now. Now, maybe it's because somebody has Now, maybe it's because somebody has chosen to find new locations. Those trails will become worn, just as the ones around Estabrook have, and I'm sure they will become beautiful walks as well. There are many beautiful ways from Chamberlain. But it would seem that this committee has come to a conclusion to increase parking, what is not needed, except for a few random anecdotal examples, when someone would drive there and would find they can't immediately get a spot, and find that depressing that accelerator for those three minutes to get to Chamberlain Field is too difficult. I would suggest, then, the thought of going to the woods is not the primary concern. It's the thought that they have to be at one particular place to park. So the love of the woods has just been bypassed on this. I would also state that as the dogs have been controlled, we have seen an increase, and again, this is on videotape, we have seen an increase in people of elderly people coming to use the woods as a place to go walk. They're bussed in, the buses are very respectful. I've helped them park. Another abutter, or shall we say owner, has provided ability for them to park. And these are people who don't want to be jumped on by dogs. They're often rather tottery, and so a wide trail is helpful for them. With increasing parking, it becomes more risky for our elderly. Our elderly should also have access to the woods. So on the whole, I encourage the parking at Punkettasit, and I think the turnaround issues are very appropriate to consider. Perhaps with a lot, there could be one way in and another way out, such that there wouldn't be too much confusion, and to keep the restrictions the way they are. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Susanna.
Hello. Patricia Guyer, 260 Estabrook Road. I again also would like to thank the committee for all their hard work. I'd like to remind the committee and the public that it was the police chief of the town of Concord, under the recommendation of the safety officer, to put the no parking signs on Estabrook Road. It was not the residents. As a consequence of those signs, as Ms. Reed has just suggested, we have data to prove that it is safe. As an adult, I feel very responsible to the young woman who was here, seven, eight, 10-year-old, who would like to be able to access the woods and Estabrook Road. If there's safe parking, great, but I think everyone in this room would be responsible if she or anyone else got hurt because we increased, even temporarily, parking on Estabrook Road. The other thing I think we might be able to agree on is flora, fauna, wildlife knows no boundaries. Those of you who have taken the occasion to actually walk the asphalted road of Estabrook Road might notice that there are wetlands between 206 and 260 Estabrook Road. Those wetlands are in trouble. We know they're in trouble because we just had a drought. May I please appeal to you as public members that if you put parking, more parking, at 299, you are going to have silted runoff that I can document and have on my phone over the years that will impinge, tamper, and hurt those wetlands. Now, those wetlands are private property, but we all know wetlands have enormous restrictions that we, as stewards of the land and private property owners, abide by. Do not put more parking on Estabrook Road. Those wetlands, your own public safety will be in jeopardy and will be harmed. It's an accident waiting to happen. I therefore endorse the recommendation of the committee to organize the growth and interest in the Estabrook Woods sanctuary. And if that means that we can safely put a parking situation on Punkettasit, that's the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I just want to start by thanking this committee. It's a large group, and how you ever all got together at 7:00 AM regularly is a miracle. So thank you all for all the hard work you've put in. Two points, I guess, I want to make for all those here and possibly on TV who are watching. Although this is a beautiful resource in Concord, there are numerous lovely places to walk your dogs in Concord. I walk at the rifle range, Madison Field, Wright Woods. There are numerous beautiful places to walk dogs, and rarely are any of those places filled with cars. So do take this opportunity to think about other places to walk your dog. There are a lot of good places. However, the second point I want to-- it's really a question, is how you arrived at the number two for the number of dogs that an individual can bring? We're anticipating increasing the dog population in our house in the next week or so, and I'm worried that sometimes we may have three. And so I just want to kind of cast our minds back to the dog bylaw discussions that were quite, you know, quite interesting. But that group arrived ultimately at the number three, which was somewhat aligned with the kennel restrictions or some other rules within Concord. And I just would be interested to know how you ended up at two, because we would love to see it be three, just on a personal note. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a quick answer. One of the things that happily coincided with the existence of our committee was the summertime, and as our committee members were on trips, vacations down to the Cape, out west, whatever, people sort of collected signs, collected experiences, checked out various places. And this was a practice that was at least observed some places. There was also the feeling that people, you know, two little dogs is one thing, two big dogs, at least you've got one in each hand, three dogs gets more confusing. But I will grant you that it was a choice that we made to try. And, you know, if people feel strongly about our number, I appreciate the feedback on it.
Hi. Pam Howell, 668 Unersnack Hill Road in Concord. Thank you all for your work in raising these issues for our attention. Many of them I wasn't aware of, so thank you for that. I find it a great privilege to walk that land with my tiny dog unleashed. Having a place in town where your dog can run around and be a dog is maybe heaven on earth. So thank you to the people who do own the land that give me the privilege to do that. I think as a dog owner, if we see people not picking up their dog's production, we should encourage fellow dog owners to do so. I know I really dislike finding that on Unersnack Hill Road and in Estabrook Woods, so picking up is really important. And horse owners, maybe you could bring a larger bag. I'm just saying. As for parking, I do walk at Estabrook Woods and other places in Concord. I haven't had a problem parking since you've limited the parking spaces. My feeling about parking is, the more we build, the more cars will come. And maybe it wouldn't be such a bad thing if Concord's areas get a reputation of not having enough parking. Coming back to its original use, especially the Harvard land, our goal is to protect that land. And if I drive down Estabrook Woods and there are 11 cars, maybe I could think, there's no room for me and my dog today. So no matter how much parking we build or pave over other wetland areas or beautiful areas on Monument Street, maybe it's enough the way it is now. Just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pam.
I'm Louis Verespeta. I live in 410 Lexington Road. I want to restate something that has been said before. This is a people's behavior problem that was formulated as a parking problem. And I just want to make the observation that there's no moral or ethical or any kind of obligation for us collectively, as the citizens of Concord, to provide access to anywhere. We don't have to provide access to Estabrook or anything like that, but we do have a major responsibility, which is to keep a very precious part of our community, which is Estabrook Woods, as a resource that every citizen of Concord can utilize. And because of this behavioral problem with people that I personally find absolutely outrageous, we have now created the parking solution, which certainly does not provide any rational addressing of the original problem, which was the people's behavior problem, but now allows the abutters, which are rightfully outraged by the behavior of the people who actually pass near their lands, gives them the opportunity to create a precedent which would be entirely inappropriate and it would actually be wrong, which is that they are going to control access to the woods from that part of a political road, which is Estabrook Road. It has to be kept in mind that the current abutters are extremely responsible people that have shown that they are true and sincere supporters of the environment. But there's no guarantee that the future is going to have the same characteristics. And when most of us are gone, maybe our children are going to ask, why were they given the opportunity to control that access at the expense of the citizens of Concord? And I'm convinced that it's not their intention to close that road or anything of that sort, but somebody in the future may actually do it. So it is the duty and the ultimate responsibility of us collectively and the town representing us to make sure that there's permanent access to the Estabrook Woods. Finally, we have to recognize that Estabrook Woods is a resource, again, not only for us but for generations, and that they may have to be protected, you see, and we may have to discourage people from going there in various ways, but we cannot curtail the right of anyone who wants to go there to go there. So I don't think that we need more parking spaces in Estabrook Road. I personally had once just turned around, because there was no parking spot, and I didn't want to wait. I went elsewhere, because there are many parts where I can put my dog in Concord. But, you know, I know, for example, that I cannot go to the great, I forgot the name of reservation, the Great Meadows, because no dogs are allowed there, you see. And I understand that as a lover of wildlife, that there's a priority there, and my dog is the second priority. So I will not be concerned in the future that I cannot take my dog to Estabrook Woods, because now we have shown that dogs and Estabrook Woods are not compatible for the long-term health. So far, we have not shown any of that, but what we are mired into, it's in a potential bloody battle between owners that are rightfully outraged and citizens of Concord that are rightfully outraged by the fact that one of the most essential rights, which is the access to the woods, for the purposes of contemplation, it's being curtailed. Finally, I have a message from my dog. My dog is called Max. He wanted to let you know that you may all be assembled here trying to figure out these issues, but he wanted to, just as a point of information, let you know that he owns the woods. They are his woods, and he will remain doing whatever he wants there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Looks like I might be the last speaker, so I'll keep this very brief. But my name is David Sanchemena. I'm with the trustees of reservations. I want to echo the comments that a lot of folks have made and thank all the members of the committee, but in particular Sally and Polly, as a witness to most of their deliberations over the course of the summer. I can tell you, they did a masterful job of working together and bringing you this set of very thoughtfully, carefully considered recommendations. You may not all agree with all of them, but I can tell you that a lot of thought went into them. And I can just say, on behalf of the trustees, that we're looking forward to working with Chris and the selectmen and seeing if we can formulate a mutually beneficial approach to creating some access at the Apthor slash Punkettasit property. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, David. And I will go right back at you that David came to most every one of our meetings at 7:00 in the morning and lives in Hamilton or the North Shore, anyway. So he had to get up even earlier than we did. So we appreciate that you paid such close attention. So I want to thank you all for your very thoughtful comments and for taking the time to come tonight. And on your handout is our email address. If anybody gets home and thinks of one more thing that needs to be said, we've read all your letters, and I know some more came today that we've just handed out to the committee. They may not even have had a chance to fully read them yet, but we will. And our next step is to gather again as a committee in a week or so and consider whether there are any things about our recommendations we will change, and then to get them onto the selectmen so that they can consider what they would like to do. So thank you very much for coming, and have a nice evening.